Oh, recording all that stuff. Oh, yeah.
Would you all please stand for the pledge allegiance?
Could be good at that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indigible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's approximately 7:40. We've spent the last couple of minutes in executive session discussing myriad issues, most of which even I couldn't fain interest. My name is David Heiser, and for some reason, the mayor has asked me to take over tonight because he is on vacation. Lucky man. We have four of us here. We have several resolutions, and I'd like to roll right into that first resolution, Greg.
Yes, sir.
Considering a proposed agreement between the Village of Rybrook and Business Electronics for police radio slash voice recording system.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook purchased police radio slash voice recording systems from Business Electronics of Sixth Capital Drive, Wildingford, Connecticut. And whereas the Village of Rybrook financed the police department radio slash voice recording systems over five years and has since paid off the equipment in full. And whereas the Village of Rybrook Police Chief seeks to utilize their services to provide maintenance of the radio voice recording systems. And whereas Business Electronics made a proposal to provide maintenance of the radio voice recording systems from August 15th, 2024, to August 14th, 2025, at a cost of $1,950. And whereas the Village of Rybrook seeks to enter into the proposed agreement with Business Electronics to provide maintenance of the radio and recording of voice recording systems. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the Village of Rybrook to sign an agreement with Business Electronics, subject to modification by council, to provide maintenance services for the police department radio and voice recording systems from August 15th, 2024, to August 14th, 2025, at a cost of $1,095. And be it further resolved that the mayor and village administrator are authorized to sign any documents necessary to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Can I get a motion and second please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Greg, do you want to explain this? Otherwise, I have to ask Michael, and he's not going to know the answer.
This is the voice recording system for police radio transmissions and telephone conversations. We purchased the equipment over five years. We made our last payment last June, so now we just have the maintenance left. The maintenance was always included in the finance payments over the previous five years.
So this records all phone calls?
All phone calls.
In or out, or?
In or out, all 911 calls and all radio transmissions.
Any other questions, comments?
No, I guess it makes sense eventually. I guess there'll be, you'll be updating all the equipment at some point. I guess for now, we do the agreement of maintaining it and then.
Well, it's state of the art.
Oh, it is?
It is, because we had the new radio system, and I had a concern that the new radio system wouldn't be compatible with this.
It is.
And it is, so it's, so I think there's really no need to make any changes in the future.
And there's a warranty and everything?
Well, that's what this is, the warranty.
Got it.
This is.
Don't we have another? Okay, I'm, forget it.
All right.
Okay?
Yep.
Any questions?
Thank you, chief.
Greg, you want to call the roll?
Yes, sir. Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Heiser?
Yes. Resolution number two, considering a proposed agreement between Local 456 International Brotherhood of Teamsters and the Village of Rybrook regarding certain leave accumulations.
Whereas the current public works foreman routinely has accumulated vacation leave he is unable to utilize due to operational needs of the public works department. And whereas the current public works foreman risks losing the accumulated vacation leave in the absence of an agreement between Local 456 International Brotherhood of Teamsters and the Village of Rybrook. And whereas the village and the Teamsters haven't negotiated a stipulation agreement dated July 18th, 2024 regarding treatment of the current public works foreman vacation leave. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves the agreement between the Local 456 and the Village of Rybrook in accordance with the stipulation agreement dated July 18th, 2024.
Can I get a motion second please?
So moved.
Second.
Greg, I don't, I don't think we have any need to discuss the specifics of this. It's already signed by both the union and by Chris. And so unless there are some questions or comments.
No, no questions.
Hearing none.
Sounds good, we'll answer it. Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Heiser?
Yes. Resolution number three, considering approving a grant application to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation Water Quality Improvement Project Program.
Whereas New York State is accepting applications for the 2024 Funding Round of the New York State Consolidated Funding Application, CFA Program. And whereas the Village of Rybrook intends to submit an application to the New York State Department Environmental Conservation's Water Quality Improvement Project Program fiscal year 2024 for vacuum trucks in municipal separate storm sewer systems, or known as MS4 areas, under the CFA Program. And now therefore be it resolved that the village board authorizes the village administrator or their designee to submit an application to the New York State CFA Program for the acquisition of a vacuum truck to support the MS4. And be it further resolved that the Village of Rybrook commits to funding 25% match as required by a $325,000 W quit request, in addition to any remainder of the purchase is not covered by the ward through this program.
Thank you. Can I get a motion and second please?
So moved.
Second.
Now, Michael, I'm going to ask you to explain what a vacuum truck does. Because I have pictures of a giant Dyson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Members of the board. So the village is applying for a combination of a vacuum truck slash sweeper combination. Out in the industry, there's what's called a vector truck, which has a hose reel in the front and a nozzle overhead and a hose, which is able to suck out catch basins. Highly specialized piece of equipment, highly abused piece of equipment, because it works very hard, very expensive piece of equipment. So we're not applying for a vector truck. What we're applying for is for a street sweeper that has a vacuum component similar to a vector truck. So it's basically a dual-purpose truck, because a vacuum truck is only a single purpose, to clean out a catch basin, to clean out a storm drain, clean out a sewer line. So it only has one task. We do have a jet truck, which we recently bought about two years ago, that does the jetting of the sewer lines. So a vector is also able to do that, so we don't need to duplicate equipment, per se. So we're looking to get a sweeper with a vacuum component in the body. And, and the DEC stated that that is a allowable item under this grant application.
Can you hear me?
And it's approximately $450,000.
Is that all?
I could get a higher one if you want.
No, I'm kidding. That was a choke, everybody.
I could get a bigger model.
So it's like an attachment to the sweeper?
It's, it's all internal, has a hose reel, I'm sorry, has a vacuum hose ready attached, three built in.
What's the diameter of that vacuum hose? Is it?
Eight inches.
Oh, it's just, that's like the vacuum truck you have?
Correct. Yep, it's like a regular vector.
But it's all flexible, not, no heavy?
All flexible, extending, boom, articulating, boom.
So do we keep the old one?
The street sweeper would be auctioned off. Our, our street sweeper right now would be auctioned off.
How long, how old is that?
Twelve years old.
And what is the life of it?
Ten. And we are, we are triple what any other sweeper of that model in the area has mileage-wise, because it's, it's out for eight months out of the year. We keep it out on the road, so we've exceeded even the mileage of other municipalities on it, yep.
Excuse me, I gotta do that.
It, it currently needs work, and we're babying along, because we're trying not to put a lot of work into it, but it does need substantial work right now.
Okay, my next question is, because it is a dual-function vehicle, is it more likely to break?
Not if used properly, not if you use it for what it's intended, no. There are four municipalities in this area up the line a little bit that have this exact same model, and they're very happy with it. Pauling has one, further up the line, I believe up in the Catskills, another municipality has one. So I've called both of them, they're very happy with their machine.
So this is allowing you for a backup vacuum truck, in essence?
A backup vacuum truck, yep.
Or for smaller jobs, I'm assuming?
For smaller jobs.
Because it's a smaller unit.
Of clean out a catch basin, we're doing catch basin repairs. No, we could do a few, has an.
Has a holding tank?
Has an eight-yard hopper.
Oh.
Yep, has a big hopper.
Oh, because that hopper is also the hopper for the sweeper? Right, the dual hopper.
Has an eight-yard hopper, holds about 500 gallons of water.
Good job.
It's a sizable piece of equipment, it's not a small piece of equipment.
So, so right now, with separate pieces of equipment, somebody who sweeps the street, then either that same person or a different person would then have to use the vacuum to clean out sewer systems and catch basins, et cetera?
We, we currently contract that work out, and we would still contract that work out because of the sheer volume of material, and eight yards is small for, for doing all the basins in the village, it wouldn't be productive. But in the instance of a storm response where catch basins are flooded and all silted up and sedimented, like after Hurricane Ida, okay, we had a number of basins that were plugged with silt, sediment, dirt, and we had to jet them and clean them, we had to hire a company to come out, and we were waiting two, three, four days to get that truck. In this case, we'd be able to just respond automatically and clean four, five, or six of them at a time and get it going.
And I take it we are responsible for 25% of the cost of this $400,000 vehicle?
Correct, yep.
That's not a bad deal. We're obligated to provide that as a match.
Yes, it would be about $100,000, $110,000, something like that.
The, the larger vacuum truck, that size of the ones that we hire out?
Yeah, yeah, but those are anywhere from $450,000 to $800,000, and they're massive, they're just too big for what we need.
Right, right, right. When you're doing, when you're doing a whole village in like a month, you hire them?
We hire them out, and honestly, it's much cheaper that way, because the maintenance, everything's all on the truck.
Maintenance and, yeah, yes, that's right, because it's a lot of wear and tear.
These are highly abused pieces of equipment, not from operational perspective, from the employees, just suck up rocks, they suck up dirt, they suck, they suck up all that stuff, and it, it bleeds up on the machine.
No, no, that makes sense.
Will, will our guys need any further training to do maintenance on this vehicle?
That's included in the, that's included in the.
Purchase?
Purchase, and extended warranty is included in the purchase as well.
Any other comments or questions?
So caller?
Depends, I would like to keep it the same as the fleet, which would be this, which would be school bus yellow, but sometimes there's an up charge for that, so it might be white.
Well, ours is white right now.
Our sweeper right now is white, yeah.
I saw it yesterday.
All our other trucks are yellow.
Got it.
So, but, not going to pay $1,000 actually, just for.
What's our old sweeper worth, worth?
I don't know. It's probably upwards of $20,000, $30,000, potentially.
Any other questions or comments?
No, that's it, I'm sorry.
Greg?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Heiser?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution number four, considering modification to the village's credit card policy.
Hmm.
No, we don't get any.
Go get credit cards, is that it?
Whereas the village administrator has recommended certain modifications to the village's credit card policy in order to meet the needs of the village. And whereas the proposed modifications include authorizing the recreation supervisor to make purchases with the village's credit card for camp purposes. Now therefore be it resolved that the village board hereby approves the proposed changes to the Village of Rybrook's credit card policy and authorizes the village administrator implement those changes as appropriate.
Can I get a motion second please?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions here? I don't know if you've read the resolution.
No, I guess it's just to help make it easier for her to purchase stuff without.
Yeah, that, that's correct.
She's a travel camp, so.
Yes.
Quite frankly, I'm sure that it is difficult sometimes for them, and Kathy is a very responsible person.
Yes, and she was, the card for her just arrived this week, too.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
She should have that in the event.
Correct, and this is, and it's solely just for camp purposes, too. So she has her cards just to make purchases when she needs to.
Right.
So we just have, we have to make the formal policy change.
Yep.
If we're going to do that.
And from what I can see, that is the only change in the credit card policy.
Correct, yes, that's the only change we're making here tonight.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
Okay. Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Heiser?
Yes. Resolution number five, considering fiscal year 2024 to 2025, general fund budget modifications and closing capital project.
Whereas on May 28th, 2024, the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees adopted resolution with an agreement with ARP for grant funds in the amount of $4,975 to build a community garden at the AJP Senior Center. Now therefore be resolved that the village, that the following general fund budget modification be approved to recognize receipt of these grant funds. And just to summarize that really briefly, again, as the resolution states, that we accepted a grant from ARP to build a community garden at the AJP Senior Center, which has been built. Of course, now we're just waiting for the plants and everything to sprout up, to hopefully provide us with some nice community vegetables. But this just recognizes receipt of that and makes it official for the books. And then be it further resolved that the following capital fund budget be closed and remaining balance be returned to the general fund, kind of a reflower project, it just returns $189.07, but that just has to go back to general fund, because that's what's left over. So that's a pretty simple book change there.
Can I get a motion second please?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments concerning this? I know we usually are just captivated by these things. And so Greg, I think you can call the roll.
Will do. And thank you to our treasurer, Trish, again, for always keeping a tight lid in these things. Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Heiser?
Yes. Resolution number six, considering authorizing the renewal, renewable option for community choice aggregation program managed by Sustainable Westchester. I am on my own going to make a motion to table this resolution until, at the very earliest August meeting. So can I like a motion, or like a second?
Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah.
I, I'm making this motion because I feel as if there's certain information which I lack, and I think the entire board lacks, concerning the actual financial impact of our choices. And until we get that information, I don't think we should rightly make a decision as outlined in the resolution.
Okay, so then, just to play it safe, what I'll do is then we'll just do a quick roll call, the resolution that Deputy Mayor Heiser made, just to table this resolution until further notice.
Mm-hmm.
So I'll just do, do a quick roll call, does that give everybody?
Yes.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes, to change the date.
Yes, Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Heiser?
Yes. Resolution number seven, considering awarding proposal for village t-shirt and apparel for recreation department programs.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook has solicited requests for proposals, also known as RFPs, through BitNet for t-shirts and apparel for recreation department programs, starting September 2024 and continuing for a period of one year. And whereas the village received the following proposals, so we saved three, one from Fusion Graphics in Montgomery, that totaled $24,433.15. Ace Customs Apparel from Grand Rapids, Michigan, at a total cost of $17,516.25. And lastly, from Day Off Designs, based out of Orangeburg, New York, for a total cost of $34,038.70. Now therefore be it resolved that the village Board of Trustees had determined that the lowest proposal is Ace Custom Apparel of Grand Rapids, Michigan, for the total bid amount of $17,516.25. And be it further resolved that the mayor and village administrator are hereby authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Can I get a motion second please?
So moved.
Second.
Do we know what the order is?
As always, I am absolutely amazed at the disparity in the bids. Did Aces and Days Off bid on the same project?
I wish I had an answer for you there.
I don't know. I mean, one is 100% more than the other.
Is there backup materials?
Yes.
Yes.
If you look.
So.
That's why I was looking sideways, sideways.
Is that what it was? That's why I couldn't see it?
Yeah, so this is.
It's all the way down and sideways.
Yeah, so Trustee Epstein, when we have like our, this was for like our travel camp, day camp, and our village events. So this is what this is for. So they're going to provide all the apparel and clothing for all of our recreation programs.
I have a question. How do you find the companies that submit bids?
So, again, so the recreational, they put out in RFPs, so.
Or like in the paper, they put?
Yeah, so they put, but this one they put through BitNet, though. So like when, Michael, for example, he uses a, he'll put them out through, also through Westmore News. But this one is just a request or proposal, so it's not really a formal bid. So this one's just an RFP through BitNet, and then whoever saw it was responded. And these are the three proposals that Recreation received.
Got it.
Then, of course, as you can see, where the cheapest one is Ace Customs Apparel, and it's not even close.
Oh, I saw the bids. I'm just saying, do we, do we have backup for what the order is? That's what I wanted to see.
True.
It is, it is there. It is there, okay. You just have to scroll down and then look sideways.
I'm sorry, yes, I mean, yes.
Yeah, in the future, can we not look sideways?
But don't look.
See? It's all there, you just gotta.
So Trustee, yes, so Trustee Epstein, so the PDF.
You've got to scroll over.
Few of them, except they have to be flipped.
See? You just keep going.
Thank you, here.
Scrolling, scrolling. You have a backup there?
Yes, Council de Marco has a.
Oh, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it. Find sideways.
Yes.
It's, it's hard for me to see it on the side.
Understood.
Sideways.
Yeah, but you can, you could flip it, though, too, as well, there, you make it straight.
If you want to take a peek.
No, 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 no.
No, so it's, you know, it's great prices.
I was going to say, I pay more for my t-shirts.
I know, it's, it's just, it's great, it's just a question of, it's a lot of shirts.
While Trustee Epstein is.
Perusing.
Surveillance the.
Surveillance, I surveilled.
Are there any other questions or comments?
And it's very fair numbers. Very fair, thank you.
Hearing none, Greg, you want to?
See, isn't it hard to see on the side?
Mm-hmm, I could flip it, I just probably shouldn't do that, edit, view, yeah.
Okay. So Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Heiser?
Yes. Greg, I think before we go to the minutes, resolution number 6.8, why don't we do the add-on now?
Okay, whatever you want to do.
And there is an add-on concerning the stipulation agreement between the Village of Rybrook and the Rybrook Police Association.
Yes, that's an add-on, so you won't see that there.
Yep.
Just so you can, just if you want to follow along. Thanks. Whereas the Village of Rybrook and the Rybrook Police Association have been negotiating a successor agreement to the collective bargaining agreement that expired on May 31st, 2023. And whereas the Village of Rybrook and the Rybrook Police Association have signed a stipulation agreement dated July 19th, 2024, approving a new three-year contract beginning June 1st, 2023. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby authorizes entering into a collective bargaining agreement with the Village of Rybrook Police Association for the period of June 1st, 2023 to May 31st, 2026, on the terms and conditions set forth in the stipulation agreement dated July 19th, 2024, as a typo, which is hereby ratified on the behalf of the Village of Rybrook. And is, is further resolved that the mayor and the village administrator are authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Can I get a motion and second?
So moved. Second.
And I take it that the Rybrook Police Association has now approved the stipulation?
Yes, Deputy Mayor Heiser, they just did so about 15 minutes before this meeting.
So, any questions or comments?
No, we're grateful that we came to terms with our police, they're valuable.
Yes, very appreciative.
And they make our village safe, and we count on them, and we're pleased if they're, especially if they're pleased, so thank you.
I would just like to commend the efforts of all those on both sides who came to this agreement.
Yes, tough negotiations.
Very tough.
Yeah, and I'll just say one thing on the matter, is that I'm getting, the bulk of the credit truly goes to Chris, and well as, no, he's not here today, as well as our excellent labor counsel that we have, that negotiated with the PBA to helping come to an agreement.
And just for the sake of harmony, I'd like to thank the PBA for coming to this agreement. I know, I know collective bargaining is never fun, having done.
Yes.
A few contracts in my lifetime. That's not something I would like to start all over again doing. So Greg?
So Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Heiser?
Yes. And now we come to what was resolution number eight, considering approval of the minutes for the meeting held on February 13th, 2024. Can we do this by acclamation?
Yep.
Yeah. Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let me just read it first.
Oh, sorry.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees approves the minutes of the meeting held on February 13th, 2024. Yes, now you can do all in favor, if you want.
We now go to.
You have to say that all in favor.
Yes.
Is there a motion? Motion second?
All, I'm sorry.
Say all in favor, I mean, I'll say aye.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
None.
None.
So moved.
Administrators report.
Sure, just a few quick things. Just something that actually just came to my attention yesterday by sheer chance, there's something that may be of interest to Rybrook residents, for those who aren't really aware, that the County Mobile Shredder is actually coming to.
Ooh, that's really popular.
But Ridge Street School, when?
Yes, tomorrow, actually.
Oh.
Jeez, that's me, yeah.
Tomorrow, we need more time. What time?
It's 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. I know this is a bit of a last minute, just on the, but this yesterday, but I just wanted to share this.
Where's the cutting, here?
It's, it's going to Ridge Street Elementary School.
Really?
Yes.
Why?
I don't know, that's probably something that we worked out with the school.
And maybe that the school probably requested the equipment.
Oh, but can anyone?
No, you know.
Is it, is it open to the public?
It's open to the public, it's on their public list. And again, anyone from anywhere can come to any one of them, but, um, again, they.
They should put that on the website as soon as possible.
I, I made a mention in the, in the residence page yesterday.
Oh, I see.
But, um, but yes, there's, so, but again, I did post a link though too, and it's on the website, just something to be aware of if you are going to use it, remember it is first come, first served. And it does say 10 to 1, but they will, um, operate until capacity, so if the capacity runs out before 1:00 PM, then, um, that's when, that's when the service will end. And there are some limitations, I think you're only going to make four boxes, I'm reading a little bit here, I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but, uh, again, it's on the website, of the county website, I put it in the residence page for that, that way you can see what the exact stipulations, um, are for that. Um, I did, once we'll talk about, um, all the different events that we've, we've had, we've had a very busy July month. Um, I, I definitely just want to start off though by thanking our Parks and Recreation staff, um, as well as the committee, uh, or Community Events Committee, which I'm also a part of, for all their hard work for, I mean, because, you know, this has definitely been, again, a very busy July, we've had a lot of events going with our Ice Cream Fridays, we have our last one this Friday, remember it's at 6:00 to 7:30 PM at Pine Ridge Park. We have, um, we've had several, a couple of music concerts, uh, we've had one thus far, we may have one, um, tomorrow, we're still trying to work that out. Um, so trustee Epstein, since we're on that, did you get a response from the band?
I did not get a response, and it will be weather dependent, so we will post as quickly as we can.
Yes, so with that being said, is that, um, we will post tomorrow morning as soon as we have an answer, uh, whether or not that will be held, uh, tomorrow. But again, as soon as we have an answer, we'll make, um, a message out to the public immediately. And then we had, again, we just, we had a food truck event this past Saturday, again, which that went overall fairly well. And we do have another Music in the Park concert with Kicking Nash, uh, next Wednesday. Um, and, uh, that's pretty, oh, I almost forgot, so on Saturday, um, we have our tag sale. So, um, yesterday was the last day to register, I'm courting that myself with the Sustainability Committee. So it was a reminder that, um, the way this works is that it's all the participating addresses, um, I'm creating a chart, and we'll, I'm hoping to get it out tomorrow, I did have some technical difficulties I ran into today, so I wasn't able to get to that. But I'm hoping tomorrow to have that out with a map as well, so that way all, anyone who's interested in shopping can know what addresses to stop by at. And there's also going to be, I mean, it's open to Rybrook and Portchester residents, but there's 62 Bowman Avenue, it's Forever Families Through Adoption, who's also a Rybrook resident, a nonprofit that he runs, but he was very nice enough to allow, uh, residents, because some of the HOAs don't allow it, and some residents just don't want to use their own addresses for, um, the tag sale to rent out space there, so there'll be that location as well. And then just, uh, lastly, the final thing I just wanted to, just a quick reminder, um, is that, remember, we are doing summer work hours, uh, from now up until, uh, the last week of August. So just, I just want to just put our mind out to the public, is please remember that on Fridays we close at 2:00 PM, um, that, and our employees are taking half an hour lunch breaks throughout the week in order to compensate for the shortened Friday schedule. But again, at 2:00 PM we do close, and that is the village hall and the senior center. Um, and because after 2:00 PM, there won't be any staff here to assist if you do come, so just please keep that in mind, so that way you can plan accordingly. And if, for any residents that are getting any sort of work done, we're working with contractors, I would just ask, and you please pass on the message to them, so that way they don't come, take a wasted trip here, because then they're probably going to be pretty angry, and I would too, if I come here and I find out that the building is closed. So just please pass that message along to them, so they can also plan accordingly as[1551.71]